And.
Good evening, welcome to the Lone Tree City Council meeting. It is May 19th, 2020. Our 4:30 study session agenda, excuse me, was canceled. We are beginning our regular meeting at 5 o'clock. We are going to wait till 5:05 to allow time for people who are joining our meeting virtually to connect to the meeting. I want to let everyone know again as a reminder about public comment. Public comment can occur three ways during our virtual meetings. You could have submitted comments in advance. To our knowledge, no comments have been submitted ahead of time. If you would like to make public comment during our meeting, you respond in the Ask a Question in the sidebar entering your name, address, and comment. Please know this is not a question and answer period. That is just what the box is labeled by the software. We will not be responding to questions during public comment, but this is your opportunity to provide feedback to city council. If any follow-up action is required, staff will be directed to respond to questions. If you'd like to speak to the council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question sidebar, and you will receive a call from the city to hear your public comment. Again, we're just going to pause for a few minutes to allow folks that are joining virtually to connect in. So appreciate your patience and a little bit of silence while we wait till about 5:05. Thanks. Again, this is Mayor Jackie Malley. You are joining the Lone Tree City Council meeting. We are waiting till about 5:05 to begin the meeting to allow folks to join us virtually. Sometimes we recognize it takes a bit of time. So again, we'll start the meeting officially at 5:05. Thanks for your patience. Again, we are waiting till 5:05 to officially start the Lone Tree City Council May 19th, 2020 meeting to allow folks to join virtually. We've got about a minute to go. If you are interested in providing public comment during the meeting today, I would suggest you go to the Ask a Question box in the sidebar and enter your name, address, and comment, and your comment will be read by staff. If you would like to speak to the council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question sidebar, and you will receive a call from city staff during the public comment portion of our meeting. Again, even though you are entering these in an Ask a Question box, this is not a time for a question and answer period with city council. This is our chance to listen to you and hear feedback that you may have for us. Any follow-up that is required will be provided by staff at the direction of council. So again, not back and forth question and answer, but we want to hear from you. Thank you. Okay, we're getting very close. Okay, it is 5:05. I will ask our, I will officially open our meeting, our May 19th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council meeting, and I'll ask our city clerk, Mr. J. Robb, to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Protan Bronik.
Here.
And Mayor Malley.
Here. We are all present, wonderful. Moving on to our Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And again, I'm looking forward to a day very soon where I will be standing six feet apart from each of you saying our pledge. Are there any conflicts of interest this evening? I'll ask, I'll ask Jay to run through quickly. Or everyone can, go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson.
None here.
Carpenter.
None as well.
Shaw.
None.
Mayor Protan Bronik.
None.
Mayor Malley.
None. Okay, the, thank you. The amendment stands as published. There are, there are no amendments. I'm going to move to public comment now. And again, I kind of gave the guidelines for public comment. Staff has indicated there is no written public comment that received prior to the meeting. I'll pause for a second and allow folks to type something in the, again, in the Ask a Question box if they're interested in providing their views to council this evening. And Mr. Robb, is there anything, anybody responding there?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not seeing any public comments.
Okay, we'll give it a brief pause. And seeing nothing, I think we will close, move on to our announcements and presentations. And first, the city offices will be closed May 25th in observance of Memorial Day. We recognize the city offices have not been open, but we are looking forward to beginning the opening of our community and office hours at the city starting. And we're going to hear a little bit more about that as we move forward into the month of June. We're going to move on to our presentations, city response to COVID-19. Our wonderful city manager Seth Hoffman, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and city council. Congratulations to all of you on your reelections. That's really exciting. That's, I know that's the next meeting, but I might not get another chance. So I wanted to say that right now. Very happy for, for all of you and look forward to working with you for your next terms. So for our COVID-19 response, the city and the city staff have still been putting everything that we have into this response. I think you'll see that we've made a lot of progress. And I think some of the steps that we've taken has helped us get the economy open a little more quickly than if we would have been a little less aggressive. So I'm really happy to share all the, the great work that the staff has been doing. I'm going to not, I'm going to let them do most of the, the work here and turn it over to Kristin to talk about just an update on ongoing city services.
Thanks, Seth. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here with you this evening. And just as always, wanted to give a quick update on the continuing great work that our city staff has been doing. We're going to talk about all the great initiatives and how we've responded to COVID, but also a lot of just general work that keeps happening with the city. Lots still going on. We continue to have development and construction projects continuing. We were really excited to hear that our first affordable housing project got approved for tax credits. And so we look forward to having that go forward on the east side of I-25. So we're really excited to partner on that and see that project get underway. Also, Keywit continues to do a lot of construction, as people probably see as they're out driving around, but they pulled their foundation permit for their second building this week. So we're really excited that they're continuing to invest in the community and we'll continue to see a lot of activity over by the Sky Ridge Station. And then Shea Homes continues to work a lot with staff. We're getting really close to them submitting their preliminary plan to continue with their housing development. So though there's been a lot going on with COVID, we're really excited that we're still seeing a lot of great investments in our community as well. On the public works front, we are excited that one capital project that's still continuing this year is Cricket Stick Traffic Signal Project that is right by the intersection of Cricket Stick and Sky Ridge, and it's by the Target. So we'll be seeing some activity out there as we put in a new traffic signal at that intersection. Also, love to get good feedback from our staff. And we actually received a resident comment today forwarded, that wanted to be forwarded to the city council, giving a huge shout out to Steve Fletcher. The comment says, "I have contacted Steve twice about different issues in our neighborhood and had timely responses each time. Most recently, I reported a burned out street light, and Steve emailed me quickly and said someone would be by on Monday to check it out. They did, and being on a corner lot, it was greatly appreciated." So the small things that we continue to do every day make a difference. And shout out to Steve for continuing to provide great service to our community. We also are excited that our team court has fully turned to virtual panels, which has been great. Our volunteers are continuing to stay engaged and being able to do panels probably throughout the summer so that we can continue to respect social distancing requirements. So we're excited we're able to keep that program moving along. And then lastly, there's been a lot going on with the Lone Tree Arts Center. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our executive director, Lisa Rigsby-Petersen, to give a quick update to council on some of the great news there.
Thank you very much, Kristin. Good evening, Mayor Malley, members of council. We do have a lot to report on to you. I know that we'll have an opportunity to talk more in depth at a later time. But I wanted to let you know that about two weeks ago, we did a patron survey. And it was really important to us to talk to our patrons and find out what they were thinking as we begin to think about how we're going to reopen and how we move forward. And the two critical questions we asked were, what would make you feel most comfortable attending a performance at the Arts Center? And when do you think you'll be ready to return? As you see from the responses on the screen, seating that has space between parties is really important to people. Required use of face coverings is also important, as well as the availability of hand sanitizer. Availability of, availability of a vaccine, of course, would be very, very, very helpful in terms of people's desire to return. And they would also like to know a bit about all of the things that we're doing. So we were happy to have the confirmation that all of the things we're already thinking about in terms of how we are going to move forward are also important to our patrons. On the next slide, you'll see the responses to the question about when our patrons think they might feel comfortable returning to the Arts Center. Assuming all the guidelines allow and all of our precautions are in place, over a third of our patrons said they would be ready to return in August, which was very reassuring about another, I can't quite see the number, I'm sorry. I think it's about 18% said they'd be happy to come back in September, and another 23 between October and December. There were about 23% of our patrons who said they weren't certain they would be able to return until about 2021. And we're sure that included in a number, probably a large proportion of our patrons who come to our Arts in the Afternoon programming and that kind of thing. So that was also reassuring to see that 75% of our patrons are going to be comfortable coming back within the year. As we have been gathering information about what people are interested in and in learning about as we're going to reopen to the public, as Kristin mentioned, we need to, we need to move forward with our programming. And so we have come up with some interim innovations. And the first one is our delivery of virtual programming. This is a photo on the screen of the event hall. And as you can see, it's turned into a mini broadcast studio. This picture was taken on Monday when we had a dress rehearsal of a classical ensemble, the Ivy Street Ensemble, along with Betsy Schwerm, who will be the narrator. So this will be the first of, we hope, several concerts, not only through the summer, but throughout the rest of the year, delivering our Arts in the Afternoon programming. We chose to go with a choose what you pay platform, and we're happy to see that people are already paying essentially what they paid for the in-person Arts in the Afternoon. Couple of other things we're looking at with our virtual streaming innovations, again, the people you choose. And it's important for us to think about securing attendance through the rest of the year for our qualifying numbers for the SCFD. As you know, SCFD is an incredibly important funder for the Arts Center. And so we're laser focused on making sure that we are capturing as much attendance and other qualifying factors so that when we get to 2021, we're in a good position. And so the virtual streaming is something that we believe the SCFD is going to accept as qualifying attendance. So we're quite excited about that. The other thing that we're doing, because we have the benefit of having a theater and staff who are working at the theater, is we've extended an invitation to cultural partners around the metro area to say, if you have content that you want to deliver, that you want to stream to your patrons, or that you want to be able to just share with the public at large, we're happy to produce that for you. And it's a twofold benefit. It's a service to our cultural partners and colleagues, but also we'll be able to count that attendance again for our SCFD formula funding. So we're really excited about that. We've had at least 10 different organizations contact us saying they're quite interested in seeing what we might be able to collaborate on. Finally, we're excited to share with you that recently the LTAC Fund Board met, and they really are demonstrating great leadership in these times of difficulty. In our meeting, many of the board members renewed their commitment to funding for the Arts Center in 2020, including $52,000 of commitments. And at that meeting, they discussed creating a challenge matching campaign where they will use their commitments to begin leveraging commitments and giving from other corporations as well as individuals. So our development team is working on the design for that particular campaign. We're really excited about what that will mean. Finally, the Fund Board was also very supportive of a lot of the innovation initiatives that I've just shared with you. And we're excited to find new ways to deliver content and to find new ways to continue to make the Arts Center relevant, even in virtual times. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, I know that we'll have an opportunity to discuss more at length.
Thanks, Lisa. So moving on to the recovery initiatives, I'm just going to ask each of the leaders of these initiatives to, to hand it off to the next. So we'll start with Kelly and Community Connection and Well-being.
Okay, great, thanks, Seth. This group made up of, as you know, employees from across the city, now under the leadership of our Human Resources Manager, Kristi Robinson, is continuing to do fantastic work in support of our community in a number of different ways. Notably, as you know, Lone Tree Feeds continues to use the funds that have been so generously donated by our community to support our local restaurants and provide thank you meals to our essential healthcare workers, as well as our first responders, and also our partners at Parker Dispatch and Fleet Services. This week also, that program has been expanded a little bit to include delivery of donuts from Mr. Donuts to a number of our businesses around the city, delivered by our Lone Tree Police Officers. So, you know, saying thank you with food is a fantastic way to appreciate folks. And I know that the feedback we've gotten has been fantastic. The other program still continuing is the volunteer mask making project. That's where our volunteer sewers are connected with materials so that they can make masks and then have those masks delivered by our police officers to folks in the business community who are in need of those. So that continues to be just a very well-received program. Next slide, please. This is a new one. Starting May 25th and running, well, let me, let me back up. This is a project initiated by the city's youth commission. And what they would like to do is really honor the graduates of 2020, the senior high school graduates, in a couple of important ways. So starting May 25th, the Lone Tree Pedestrian Bridge will be lit up in green and gold. And that is really in honor of all high school graduating seniors. And then the other thing the youth commission wanted to do was to create what they call a senior street. So beginning on May 30th, it's actually a one-day event. The idea is to invite families to make signs for their seniors and then deliver those and have them set up in front of the Arts Center along Common Street. So between Morning Star and the Arts Center, there will be essentially a street honoring the graduates, where they can come throughout the course of the day to see the street that's been made in their honor, maybe get out and take some photos and really hopefully feel appreciated. So there will be more information on that project to come later this week as the youth commission, working with Leanna and others, develop more details around that program. Next slide. Okay. And then finally, just a reminder of the Community Blood Drive that will be happening on Wednesday, May 27th, from 11:00 to 3:30 at the Lone Tree Arts Center. I think we do still have some slots available, and people can register online at the city's website. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. Great to see you tonight. It has been a hopeful time around economic recovery since the safer-at-home order has been in effect. And several things to update you on. One, you know, the slow reopening of our retail business community has been great to watch and track. On our website now is a open-for-business platform that is established through our GIS department. And it shows all of, all the variety of businesses that are currently open in the city. But more importantly, you know, incrementally tracking who has been opening and seeing traffic return to our retail centers has been important to track as well. You know, entities that, it was a slow, it was a slow start. Mostly small businesses were, were opening on, on the first Friday that they could. But now most of our department stores separate of Park Meadows are starting to open. That includes Kohl's, who opened up over the weekend. Nordstrom and Nordstrom Rack will be opening on Thursday. And, you know, several others in the area along the way. So we'll keep tracking this. You can be watching it on the website. We also have the ability to track foot traffic as well and see just how long it takes anything to return to any level of normal. You know, second, we're starting to really see a flood of temporary use opportunities in our community, primarily from the restaurant community, but I think also from our retailers who want to do outdoor sidewalk sales or other kinds of events. The temporary use permits that are coming in are typically request some use of their parking lot or sidewalk, but also potentially an extension of their, you know, liquor license so that they can serve, you know, dinners or other, you know, have other activities that the restaurant would do in a safe space that is now following even the governor's suggestion from their press conference yesterday. So this will actually keep us very busy, I think, in the next couple of weeks. The, the types of requests have been coming in quickly, and I think you'll see a lot of this activity coming soon. Next slide, please. Of course, the, the major hands-on effort and all, all folks who were involved in this was the Park Meadows reopening request. That was, you know, initiated by Brookfield Properties, all the work that they've put into, you know, showcasing how they, Park Meadows can be safe or even safer than other retailers in Colorado. And the, the data they put behind it, but also the support of Douglas County in submitting the variance request to the, the full support of the Tri-County Health Department in this effort. And of course, all the staff and the council's support to getting this done was a, a very quick and significant effort over the course of about a week. So as it says here, we're, we're hopeful to hear something this week. Nothing's been said just yet, but obviously the opening of Park Meadows and retailers inside of Park Meadows would be significant to our economy. Next slide, please. And this is the final, you know, bit of information. Kristin mentioned a lot of it earlier as well. That our existing employers, our development projects and primary employers are playing a big role in our recovery as well. The In-N-Out project is continuing to move forward. We are, they now have official recorded documents in place and will begin their construction and development projects soon. You may have seen some of the press around Yardbird, our brand new outdoor furniture store next to Mike's camera, and, you know, subsequently, the new In-N-Out site as well. They're, they're getting a lot of press attention as a new business here. The COBOL Attainable Housing announcement of last week, we're thrilled that that's coming along, as well as the other developments around the Ridge Gate Parkway Station and Shea Development. Charles Schwab is, is doing well. They have told us that they, they do intend to keep their employees working from home for the foreseeable future. That's not indefinitely, but do not have immediate plans to bring people back into the building for social distancing reasons. And then our, our primary employers in development, Lockheed Martin continues to work on their, their building, and they anticipate opening with their 800 employees at Parker Dune in July. Keywit Infrastructure breaks ground on K-2 in a couple of weeks, so obviously with their foundation permit completed. And then Co-Clear Americas with their 400 employees, not completely moving in the building yet, but now completely occupy the building on Park Meadows Drive, which will have, will be, is now officially announced as their Americas headquarters for the company. So the economy on, on one front has a lot of hopeful terms to it. And thank you for all your support. Finally, switching to public affairs, the three major things are happening. The Colorado General Assembly will reconvene next Tuesday. And, you know, relative things that will come along with that, including the Sales and Use Tax Task Force, potential adjustments to para, and lots of other things. We'll keep, be keeping a keen eye on their activity as they meet again. The CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which we've heard a lot about. An executive order was signed yesterday by the governor to distribute $275 million to local, non-entitled local governments in Colorado that didn't receive it directly from the federal bill. That distribution formula has not yet been set, but knock on wood, there's, there's some potential for Lone Tree to see some reimbursement from the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And then finally, the HEROES Act is federal, three trillion federal legislation that was introduced last week in the U.S. House of Representatives. It does have a provision for state and local governments' financial support. It's been passed off to the U.S. Senate, and I believe this act will have a, a lot of debate ahead of it before we know any final result. That's my final slide, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Seth. Oh, Bill, sorry. I wanted to, can I just quickly ask Jeff to just touch on the electronic signature? Just, just give us a summary of where it is, the governor's order, and that, that it has been challenged? Just, and then, sorry, Bill. Public health after.
Yes, happy to. There has been a, and also an executive order by the governor to allow electronic signatures to be part of the petition gathering process, you know, due to the pandemic. And that is considered very controversial. There are business groups, including Colorado Concern and the Denver Metro Chamber, who have filed lawsuits to slow it down. But what the, the consequences of if it were to move forward with that, it'd be, you know, the, you know, the ballot in 2020 could be lengthy if folks can, you know, still find signatures in ways that they didn't traditionally do through in front of, you know, in person. So there, there's no official update, Mayor, whether it's going to stall, but there's, there's a lot of activity to, you know, work around it.
Thanks, Jeff. I just wanted to make sure council is aware that that is moving forward, and there will be, Denver South is also looking at taking a position to oppose the action and maybe engaging as well with, to fund some part of the lawsuit that challenges the governor's order. So just more to come on it, but I wanted to make sure council was aware of it. So thanks for that. And then apologies to interrupt. Always do great work, the whole team. But now, Bill, let's hear what's going on with public health. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and city council. Since last time we talked, the Public Health Initiative Group has been very busy keeping track of the amended public health orders, the evolving guidance that's been coming out, and making sure that the right people have the right information to take advantage of what is allowed within the safer-at-home orders. One of the things that I wanted to highlight today that we've been really putting a lot of effort into is the reopening framework. And this is a very thoughtful and deliberate plan that focuses on ensuring that we provide for the safety of our citizens as well as the city staff as we reopen city facilities. So we have a three-phase plan. The first phase started off this week, what we're calling a soft reopening. We had minimal employees at the office, and it, the office still remains closed to the public. But what we're doing is going through and validating the processes and procedures that we put into place to provide for the safety of both the public and the city staff. So beginning next week, we're going to go through a two-week period, what we're calling moving to a new normal. And we'll probably have somewhere around 50% of the staff at the office. That number will fluctuate depending on department to department, ensuring that they're able to social distance. social distance. At this point, we will begin opening to the public. We're going to open from Tuesdays, on Tuesdays from 8 to 12, and then on Thursdays from 1 to 5. So for two weeks straight, we'll go through and make sure that everything we've put into place makes sense, and it's providing for that sense of security that folks want to have when they come to the city facilities. We'll also be testing out the municipal court process and live virtual council meeting process. And then we're estimating around June 8th that we'll be able to kind of transition to what we're calling our new normal. And this will be in place probably until there's a vaccine. So we're expecting that somewhere up to maybe 70% of the city staff will be present in the office. The rest will be remote working. The offices will be open to the public. We're still going to be offering appointments for vulnerable individuals so that we can minimize their risk of exposure. We anticipate during this phase that the municipal court will be open, but we'll still be conducting meetings, both live and virtual kind of combination hybrid meetings. We're going to resume our normal building eight to five hours, and hopefully everything will continue to move forward from there. We won't take any steps backwards. So unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Chief Wilson.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Let me fix my camera. I don't have a camera on my computer. I have to get this makeshift one. So over the last week and a half, we've been working with businesses on the face covering order, and I'd say it's been very, very good. I think we've had about 10 calls for service thus far regarding people refusing to wear masks. They haven't ended up in any arrests, but we've had to trespass a few people, and some people have been a little belligerent. Typically, it involves some alcohol as well. So but I'd say by and far, it's been pretty good. Most businesses have figured it out. We've had a few with some corporate pushback, not wanting to put their employees at risk. We've had some extra duty assignments where we've had officers there. But we've worked through all that, I think, just patiently with the various businesses to try to get compliance. And I'd say right now, we're doing, we're doing very well as far as getting folks to enforce that order. I just kind of want to give a brief update on COVID-19-related calls. So as I said, we've had about 10 face covering calls. I would say over, and it's been a little hard to track because sometimes they clear it differently, or you don't really realize it's COVID-related. But confirmed ones is around 47 confirmed COVID-related calls since, you know, the first public health orders came out. And so that's, you know, I would say for the length of time, that's pretty good. I'd say for the most part, we've done really, really well. Citizens have complied. Most of those calls, if you take out the 10 related to face coverings, have been just folks uncomfortable with what they're seeing in a park or in a certain location, and wanting us to come and contact folks. And thus far, obviously, we have not, we have not issued any, you know, public health order violations. Call for service trends for the city, we have had an uptick in calls in general. We're back to where we were probably right before this began as far as calls for service per day. We anticipate as stores open, we'll get more, you know, shoplifting type calls, theft-type calls. Probably the biggest concern we have right now, and one we've been working diligently with our impact team and our midnight folks, is really just car break-ins, folks coming into the city and breaking into cars. And that's been happening throughout the county and really throughout the metro area. So we did have a really good arrest this weekend where we arrested an individual who's probably going to be tied to at least 13 different car break-ins throughout the, really along the Park Meadows corridor. And he's probably involved in more than that. But we've been really focused on trying to quell that issue. And then as far as us moving back to normal operations, so we started moving back two weeks ago with bringing our detectives in about 50%, our CPU unit back into 50%. And then this week, we moved all of our patrol officers back to normal operations for them. Still, obviously, doing the social distancing and the cleaning and disinfecting. But as calls got back to where they were almost previously, it was important for us to get back to normal operations. And as far as health goes, you know, we're still, knock on wood, but we're still doing really well. And hopefully, all those precautions that we put in place will continue to keep our officers safe. If you could just go to the next slide. And then, you know, we've had a lot of really, I'd like to highlight a few positive, a lot of positive things we've been doing. You know, we've obviously been helping with Lone Tree Eats and the Mask Project and delivering masks. And, you know, we even armed our officers with, with extra masks that we had available. So in case they got into a conflict with somebody over the mask order, they just simply give them a mask and hopefully, you know, stop that conflict. And so other things we've done is, I know these pictures are hard to see, but, you know, we did a joint thing with Morningstar, and really, it was really pretty cool. I went out there. I actually took that picture where it was about 50 to 60 cars with sheriff's deputies, Lone Tree, and then a whole bunch of supporters of either the nurses or the people that live there, family members, holding up signs and honking and going around the building. So that was a really cool event at Morningstar. And then there was a thing put together for, to support the local health workers. So we participated in that, and that hit every hospital in Douglas County. And I got a couple of pictures from, as you can see, a huge crowd of doctors and nurses out in front of Sky Ridge. So those have been really, and the officers really like doing them. I think they like delivering the masks. They like delivering the food. It's a way for us to say thank you back to some of the essential workers out there. And then, lastly, we've been doing a lot of drive-by birthday parties. They only take a few minutes, but, you know, the nice notes we get from family members and from parents, and how much impact it has on the kids has been pretty tremendous. So we'll keep doing those things to, you know, build goodwill with the community. And then, you know, lastly, I'll just wrap up with, you know, we continue to work with our Neighborhood Watch programs, HOAs and Business Watch to continue to build good partnerships. And I think that's probably why it really wasn't that difficult once the mask order or the face covering order came out to work with them. And because we already had great relationships with them. So any questions?
Just thank you. Thank you to all the team. Seth, is that, is that it for the staff reports?
That is. Just a reminder that if any community members have questions about anything related to COVID-19 or anything that the city's doing, the best way is to either go on to citylonetree.com/contact or call us during business hours. We always answer the phone.
Wonderful. And I think, again, it's a great summary of the tremendous work that's being done, just the day-to-day activities that we'd always be doing, but then the special effort being put in by the Lone Tree team during the COVID, during the COVID pandemic and the response. So let's quickly see if council has any questions or thoughts on any of that great information that was just presented. So I'm just going to go in order. Mayor Protem Brunnic, any thoughts?
No questions for me. I'll just say to Bill, I'm really excited about the plans to get folks back in the office. I think that, you know, I'm hearing at my business from some people who, you know, have pretty tough situations at home to work through with babies and kids and other things. So I think, you know, on the flip side of working from home, there's a lot of people who are super excited to get a chance to come back in and for their own productivity and their own mindset. So really excited to see we've got such a thoughtful plan put together there. So thank you.
Councilmember Anderson, any comments?
No questions. I would chime in with Kathy. Just a lot of appreciation for all the staff for the progress on the initiatives and helping our citizens get through this as safely and as quickly as possible and try to get our economy back on its feet. But thanks to staff for just a great effort and innovation in terms of demonstrating once again what a great city Lone Tree used to live in.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember Carpenter, anything?
Yeah, just appreciate the update from each and every one of you. And yeah, to echo the former comments, yeah, just a great job. I know it's a really difficult situation that we're all in, but I truly think that staff is doing the best that we all and you all can, and we greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. And last but not least, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you. I would just underscore what's been said about the great work that's being done. It's always amazing to me to see what is being accomplished behind the scenes and how proud I am of all of you and your staff to make all of this happen. So thank you.
I think, I think, Win, I can't hear you anymore, Win. I'm not sure if you're still saying, well, we just, again, the ability to pivot and respond to COVID has been remarkable. So I think I speak for our residents, and I certainly speak for council, and just saying, job well done, job not finished, but job well done so far. So thank you. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, which includes minutes from the April 30th special meeting, minutes from the May 5th regular meeting, minutes from the May 7th special meeting, claims through the period of April 28th to May 11th, 2020, and the March 2020 Treasurers' Report. I will ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. And we'll quickly do a roll call vote. We'll ask Mr. Robb to run through.
Councilmembers Anderson.
Approve.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Brunnic.
Aye.
And Mayor Malley.
Aye. So unanimous approval of our consent agenda. And so that was the last formal action that this body will be taking in our old roles. I think we're all knowing we're going to be swearing in myself and two of our awesome council members in just a minute. But we have to adjourn Sinie Dai, and I'm sure there's a number of ways to pronounce that, but that's the one I've chosen for tonight. So we are adjourned, never to be reconvened as that body, but excited to move on to our organizational meeting of our new council. So I don't believe I need a motion to adjourn. I think I can just do that as the mayor. So now, moving on to agenda item number nine, opening of our organizational meeting. And I will be calling to order this new city council, same faces but new terms. So first up is me. And so I will turn it over to our city clerk, Jay Robb, to lead me through the process.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo Seth's comments about, congratulations to you and Councilmember Brunnic and Councilmember Shaw. And if you are ready, we'll go ahead and administer your oath.
I'm ready.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Jaclyn Malley.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jay. I've got a few people in my house that are celebrating. I don't know if they mean it or not, but they just opened the door and surprised me a little bit there with my daughter's cross-country bells. So, thank you. And again, it is my honor to serve this great community. So now I have the privilege of swearing in two of my awesome partners and council. I could not be more excited to continue my service with them. So first, Win Shaw. Win, are you ready?
I am ready.
Wonderful. And you already have your hand raised. So beautiful. Okay. So I state your name.
I, Win Shaw.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
District One.
District One.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About, upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Councilmember Shaw. And if my kids knew, they would be ringing the bells for you as well. So their virtual bells ringing for you, my friend. All right. Next up is the oath of office for our Mayor Protem and our Councilmember Brunnic. So Kathy, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Let me see that hand. Let me see that right hand up. All right. We can't see it, but I'm assuming you've got it up.
It is.
I state your name.
I, Kathy Brunnic.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member, District Two.
Of the office of council member, District Two.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Councilmember Brunnic. Wonderful to be, looking forward to another four years of productive service with both of my esteemed colleagues. So with that, now we are moving on to the election of our Mayor Protem. This is something we do every time we sit a new council, and I will look for a motion from council.
I move to nominate Kathy Brunnic as Mayor of Protem.
I second.
Okay, wonderful. We've got a motion in a second, and Mr. Robb, I'll ask you to quickly call the roll.
Councilmembers Anderson.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Brunnic.
Aye.
Mayor Malley.
Aye. Congratulations to our Mayor Protem, Kathy Brunnic. So not a lot of new faces, but I think a lot of very wonderful people that I am really honored to continue to serve with. So excited for that. We are now almost finished. We're going to move on with council comments, and I'm going to have the gentlemen begin this evening. I'm going to leave the last word to the ladies, the newly sworn-in ladies. So we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Malley. What an unusual year we're starting off with. Just so different in terms of public safety and as we have found out, so different in terms of local governance. But what a pleasure it is to be associated with a staff that is so committed, so dedicated, and so innovative in terms of working on a daily basis to provide the necessary services and helping us through this COVID crisis. I am honored to be a part of this organization. I look forward to our recovery and our movement over the next few years. Lone Tree continues to be a great place to live, and there is lots of opportunity for us to make it even a better place as we move forward. So thanks for everybody in terms of your commitment, what we have achieved so far in Lone Tree, and just look forward to working with everyone and the opportunities that are in front of us as we move forward.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Councilmember Carpenter.
All right. Yes. So congratulations, three of you, on your reelection. Glad we have the band together still. We've got a lot of hard work ahead of us, but I think that we have a really cohesive group, no one with an agenda, and all team players, and everyone truly has the resident's best interests in mind. So I look forward to working with you, at least for two more years, maybe more. I also wanted just to acknowledge all the frontline workers as well. It's been, it's been a crazy last couple of months, as we all know. My family has personally been able to spend a lot of time and effort and energy supporting them with a group of, you know, our neighbors and friends and family as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of them who are out there. And I know we do a great job in Lone Tree Feeds and Eats and everything else. I just wanted to wanted to make that, that public comment. Staff, again, I'll just echo my comments from earlier, but thanks for all that you do. Certainly unique times that we're living in. So, again, I appreciate all you are doing continuously. And that's all it. On a personal note, I'll just kind of share with you, it's been a while, but this has been a great reset. And so, I've been making the most of it. I truly have, and my kids have, in terms of the new normal that we're in and adjusting to remote learning. We only have one week left, so thank God for that for my life. We're excited about that. But it's really enabled us to take a little breather. I'm usually out five nights a week at least, throughout all of my various commitments, professional, civic, otherwise. And it's been really nice to spend good quality time. I've gotten to know, I've gotten to see my neighbors dramatically more. We're out walking and biking and talking and visiting at a distance. But it's been able, it's been great visibility, and it's a great sense of community, and I think everyone's on the same page. So, I just wanted to share that piece too, how kind of refreshing this little pause and this reset has been. And I hope that all of you are also trying to find ways to, to, to make the most of it. So, thanks for all you do, and congratulations to everyone. And thanks, staff, for keep on rockin'.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you. Well, looking at the last four years, I see so many good things to celebrate. Some projects were begun by prior councils, and we had the opportunity to celebrate with them, like the completion of the pedestrian bridge, the opening of three additional light rail stops to serve the city's residents and businesses. We're implementing smart traffic signals along the Yosemite Corridor in partnership with others to serve everyone from Lone Tree to Greenwood Village. Infrastructure building continues in Ridge Gate East, and I personally look forward to seeing our first attainable housing units to be conveniently located by the Ridge Gate Light Rail Station. Businesses like Kiwit, Lockheed, and Cochlear Americas continue to choose Lone Tree as their home, and so many important businesses to our city continue to thrive and grow here. Lone Tree is a world-class, forward-thinking city, and I'm proud to serve and call Lone Tree my home. I'm grateful for the city staff, their creativity and ability to deliver strong results. Their performance over the past four years has been consistent at a level of excellence of which we can all be very proud. The Arts Center and their volunteers do amazing work, no matter what challenge they face. Thank goodness, we have a robust emergency operations plan, because it certainly got a vigorous workout. We have much recovery yet to accomplish, however. Thank you to the Lone Tree Police and volunteers who keep our community safe always, and look for opportunities to support our local businesses by being present and with them in good times, and to protect their investments in our community in times of crisis. I'm grateful for all the first responders and for those who staff essential businesses, how lucky we are to have businesses and partners like Sky Ridge, South Metro Fire, South Suburban Parks, Douglas County Libraries and Schools, Tri-County Health, and our Douglas County Commissioners. I'm thankful for those members of city council with whom I've been privileged to serve, and with whom I look forward to continuing to serve. We have a strong team, a good balance of viewpoints that keep our discussions lively and help make our decision-making stronger. I look forward to the next four years and are charged to continue making the city a place that residents and businesses alike choose to be. I'm honored to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Win. Our Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Brunnic.
Well, I'll speak just a little bit more from a personal note tonight. I just, it is amazing to me to sit here and be accepting another four years of council, mostly because I never saw myself doing this kind of role. As you all know, I'm a businesswoman at heart. And I have, I am just so very grateful for the opportunity to learn, as I have over the last four years. It has been such an interesting journey that, you know, from the time that I joined council with these fabulous people, to just really take every week with something new to learn, something new to care about, something new to really digest and try to understand the, the leadership that's brought to us by the city staff and by our attorney. I'm so grateful for them, like helping us really become the, the leaders that we, we have to in this role, and help us really see all sides of the issue so that we can make good choices. And I take that very seriously. I know that I've grown during this time to be a better citizen, to be a better listener, to be a better advocate. I know that my children, of all people, when I asked them, when I was deciding, Jackie and I were talking about whether or not I would run, again, I left really the decision up to the family, because I know in many ways, I'm so grateful to them to let me work full-time, parent full-time, and city part-time. And when I asked them why they would want me to, you know, either start or stop this journey, they all said how proud they were to tell people that I was a public servant and that I was serving in this capacity, given how busy our lives are, that, that we as a family are committed to doing good in the world and committing to being public servants. And so, here I am again, thanks to their support. So, so much love to all of them for the times that I missed baseball or basketball or a school event to, to help with the city. So, I'm very, very grateful to them. I'm also, I would just like to say that one of the things that, as people think about serving and thinking about being part, things are so divided in the world, and, and it seems like an ugly thing to choose on some days, that I've got to say that I am amazed at what working in city politics and in, in politics in general is like. It really is unbelievably fulfilling, and the opportunity to meet so many other people and work in teams outside the city. I know all of us have assignments that we take very seriously. I've been blessed to get to do CML, work with Ridge Gate, to work with South Suburban, and to do the partnership of Douglas County Governments. All of these places expose you to other advocates in other parts of our great state that are really trying to do good work. So, when you get to see that every day, I think that makes you feel just that much better about the, the state of our state and where we're headed, because there's a lot of really amazing people serving today. And that makes me even the more proud to get to be one of those people. I'll just end by saying, it is an honor to serve. I'm very grateful. And I love these four people that I serve with every day, because I can guarantee you, if I did not, I would not be sitting here for another four years. They are amazing and kind and supportive. I'm really grateful to be nominated again as Mayor of Pro Tem. And I promise to do the very best I can to back up Jackie on, on the days that she needs it. And I look forward to four years of really great work in the city of Lone Tree. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kath. And again, my council members have been extremely eloquent. I think I would just conclude our council comments this evening by saying that, you know, I started this journey, gosh, it has been 16 and a half years ago when I, when I was first appointed to the Lone Tree Planning Commission. I've just completed my 12th year of service on the Lone Tree City Council. And when I started in 2008, we had just entered the Great Recession. And I think we all knew the uncertainty that we were facing at that time. Never did I anticipate that in my second term as mayor, I would be starting as we start to rebound and recover from the COVID pandemic. But what I will let you all know is that I could not ask for better partners sitting alongside me than the folks that you just heard from. I could not ask for a better staff than you heard from earlier. There is a phenomenal team of individuals that are working in the city of Lone Tree for the benefit of all of us, for the residents and for the businesses, and really for the entire Douglas County community. I'm so very, very proud of the great work that you have done during the tenure that I have had the privilege of serving. And I know that there are great things to come. We are, we could not be better positioned to rebound and recover than with the individuals that are on the Lone Tree team. And I'm very, very excited to be a part of that team for the next four years. And I would like to conclude my comments by saying I just, how much appreciation and heartfelt gratitude I have for the support of my awesome family. Doing this for 12 years, I have missed my fair share of activities with my children. And I do see this last eight weeks of my 20-year-olds being back in the nest from college as really an opportunity to connect with them that I never, never, ever thought I would have. But I, I am really proud of the two awesome children that are, were ringing bells for me earlier, and my amazing husband, who has been so supportive of me through this journey. But I have some dear friends who I think are watching this evening as well. And you have been just such great champions for me, great ears for me to listen to, great friends to kind of talk me through the challenging times. And without each and every one of the support of my family and friends, I don't think I, much like our Mayor Pro Tem, would be taking this next journey for the next four years. So, again, tremendous gratitude in my heart to the Lone Tree community for the opportunity to continue to serve. I want to let you know that I think there's a bright future ahead for our city. We are well-equipped to recover and really make a difference in Douglas County as we have already. I, I am betting on our city, and I'm betting on the great people that you have chosen to lead the city, including the Lone Tree team. So, with that, I look forward to hopefully seeing all of you in person soon. But we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.